Just think about what kind of expectations you want to set in general right after he was hired because he's he controls nothing.
Hello, it's seven o'clock. I'll call our September 5th meeting to order. Joe?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Leah is not here this evening and Jim will hopefully join us in progress. Carly?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
I'm here. Dr. Slano?
Good evening.
Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Okay, please join in.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would something like a petition statement?
I can do that. I'll take it. Mount Hore Bay Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Number two, agenda and the minutes approval. Two A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Carly, seconded by Adam, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of our August 21st, 2023 board regular meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Adam, for approval of our August 21st, 2023 board regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board, school news. Ethan, first day?
Yeah, we're having a fair share for us. First day for the whole district today. We had some people come in last Friday, but a couple things for us. So boys soccer is playing tonight at Wisconsin Dells, and they're also playing portage on Thursday, September 7th. Girls golf is versus Reesburg on September 7th as well, and they play Edgewood next Monday. varsity football has their first, is it their first home game?
Second.
Second home game on Friday versus Stock Prairie, and I know, I believe it's the marching band's first appearance at their game as well, so that's exciting. Girls swim has a meet at Lodi on Saturday, September 9th. Musical practice has just started today, so that's getting underway as well, which is exciting. And yeah, we're going to be busy as the year continues, so lots of support too.
Awesome. Thanks, Ethan. Dr. Slano?
Well, you've hit a lot of many exciting activities taking place. I want to just express my gratitude, and I know on your behalf as well, to our custodial maintenance team for all that they've done to set the conditions for us to have such a positive launch to the school year. The buildings are sparkling, the fields are aligned. All the projects are just being buttoned up, and I want to tip a hat to, of course, David and his team that he leads. And just wishing everybody a wonderful, wonderful start to the school year.
Does anyone else have school news to share?
I had a, I took the opportunity on Friday, Paul Christensen was gracious enough to welcome me to the middle school to get to see the sixth graders on their first day of school, and I was there probably about an hour and a half or so, maybe in the morning, and I walked in, they'd been at it for an hour already or so by the time I got there, and I walked in and it was just like, it was well orchestrated, and it was just, it was really cool to see. There were, half of them were in the gym, and they had been running and playing games while the other half was doing tours of the building with different teachers. They were going around and finding the art room and the tech ed rooms and their classrooms and music rooms, and then they would swap, and they got a nice presentation, a nice orientation of the little school from Paul and Katie, and they just, they all looked comfortable and excited and energized and loud, and it was, it was awesome. It was clear that, you know, I walked in the office and I got a detailed list of the two minutes scheduled, where they were going to be and when, so it was really easy for me to walk around and say hi to teachers and follow what the activities were for the morning. So it was clear that a ton of work and planning went into the, went into the morning, and they were running from pillar posts to pull it all off. So it was a great, great orientation for our sixth graders and a great welcome to the middle school, so. Congrats to Paul and Katie and all the staff at the middle school.
Anyone else?
I just had two quick things. One, as you all know, I was able to attend the admin retreat and then also the teacher consultation, and I just want to say to Dr. Slano, he did a fantastic job planning two days that were, based on my observations, really well received, and his teachers and the admin and staff all seemed incredibly happy and positive. There was really good energy at both events, so it was really cool to see.
Great team effort.
And then my only other thing was, I don't, some of you haven't been home yet today. I worked from home today. In our mail, we got the fall legislative conference. It's on Saturday, November 4th. It looks pretty interesting. I am going to plan to attend, and I believe Dr. Slano is as well, so if you're interested in attending, do you want to just email me or Dr. Slano?
We can drive up together that morning if you want. It's in Spring Green, maybe about an hour, 45 minutes away. Love to have you join us. Rod's come with us on that in the past, the legislative conference.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else? Citizens comments?
I don't see any.
Number four, personnel transactions. Anything special for us to note?
Not tonight. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Adam, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out? Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll approve that. Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Joel, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Discussion items. Six A, committee member reports. Rod, do you want to begin with the building grounds and transportation?
Sure, I'd be happy to. We met on August 28th, and there were three sort of main pieces of the meeting. The first had to do with improvements to the softball facilities. We're so lucky to have great partners in the softball club. I think that is, that is well known, but that tradition will continue. We heard from Kurt Adler on the latest plans for improvements at the softball diamond. Those improvements include paying the dugouts, replacing infield fencing, new batting cages, and adding pitching lanes. And again, what a great partner the softball club is. We also heard from Brian Toth about bus issues. All of the buses passed inspection. Route information went out to parents in a timely way, and we started the year, I don't know if this has changed or not, but we started the year with one open morning route and two open afternoon routes. And then, as always, we had a great, a couple of great presentations from Dave. One was on the work that has been done, or an update on the work that has been done over the summer, and then he walked us through, and it was great photo tours of the work that will be done in the future. So great job to Dave and to Brian, and we look forward to another productive meeting in September. It's on my calendar.
Awesome. Thanks, Rod. Anyone, any questions for Rod? Scott, I believe you're filling in for Jim to give us an update on the finance committee?
Hi, everybody. So we did not have a finance committee meeting in August. You may recall, finance committee meets the second Monday of every month, so the second Monday in August is our annual meeting. So we didn't have a formal, traditional finance committee, but thanks, everybody, that were able to attend and be a part of our annual meeting. Always appreciative. We have a September finance committee meeting next Tuesday, not next Monday, next Tuesday, because of a variety of scheduling conflicts for people that will be in attendance. So again, that meeting is a virtual meeting next Tuesday at 2:00, not at 4:30, at 2:00. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone have any questions? Adam, you want any safety announcements?
Yeah, absolutely. The bulk of our meeting last month was reporting out from our school resource officer, Officer Rosenmeyer, and it was great. We had a really lengthy discussion. He wrote through a lot of data, just in terms of the number of related calls for service, great slide deck, if you want to look through a lot of the facts on it to check through, and if you have any questions about that, I'm sure you'd be glad to answer. Nothing that particularly was catching his eye there. I think the one element that we discussed was, because it had come up a lot, was of late was bullying and trying to track incidents in there. Had some, had some pretty good data about that, about maybe being, the incidents being less than the perception of the incidents out there. Also a call for folks to make sure they're reporting when things happen so that he's able to do something about it, and it's really difficult otherwise. The, wrote through a lot of the training that they've done the last year and a lot of the involvement. Thought it was really cool how many different activities that he has participated in, just to be around and show that he's involved throughout regular events, and make himself a little bit more accessible probably to students rather than someone you only reach out to if you're in trouble. And the one other thing about that was that he, I liked hearing from him about the connections he tries to maintain with the kids who are, where the kids were having problems. Those are the ones that he's concerned about a lot, making sure that they have an outlet, even if he's been one who's been disciplining them in the past, that he feels like has a good read on them and where they're at, and that they can come to him with other problems. And he says he's been able to maintain a really good relationship with a lot of those kids too. So both from, you know, not risk and want to watch out for those kids, and then just any other concerns about where they're at in impacting the rest of the student population. So that was great to hear. The goals for this year, just want to bring those forward a little bit. Work with the middle school administrators to set up social media safety and awareness class. Working on education for students due to vaping issues, that's a big one. Just all the packaging and marketing and whatnot being basically candy sold to, sold to kids, and not enough maybe of the social pressure to not do that anymore. We had no smoking back in the day. Continue to develop a working relationship with students across all schools, and again, proactively work with students who have high police contact. So those were his areas of emphasis, and it was really engaging presentation.
Any questions for Adam?
The social media class that you talked about, is that like a one-time thing? Is that a, is that a series that they go through? What's, what was the, I don't understand that.
Yeah, so we call it digital citizenship, and it's offered at many grade levels, and it capitalizes on what was taught previously. So for example, we expose kids to it as early as dinner, at the end of the second. But then we kind of get into some of the more distressing sides of social media once we get into the middle school. And I would like to have the school resource officer, Officer Rosenmeyer, maybe even offer a parent night to just kind of tell them, hey, this is what we're teaching, but be, here are the things that we also know you should know about access to social media and other things. So I wrote myself a little no when you said that.
Adam, I think you're also up for the Villages Park Recreation and Forestry Commission.
We have been in a bit of a hiatus in terms of meetings, so I don't have a report.
Thank you. Six B, Dave, long-range facility plan updates, summer projects.
All right, well, the summer's been quite productive. We've got a lot done. I did provide, I'm going to sit here. I did provide the BGT committee some pictures of some of the work that was got, that we got done over the course of summer. Some of it doesn't lend itself well to pictures like controls for the HVAC system. You can see things like this, you know, the playground at the PC, all new, you know, crack filled, seal coated, some busted up asphalt that, you know, we really don't, we really don't want to replace the asphalt because we really don't know maybe what the future is there, so slapped another band-aid on. We did, did much better than slap a band-aid on. We gave a pretty good fix-up this year with the new stripes and everything. So I'm amazed at all the stripes they used to manage their road, line up stripes, you can't go past here. And then we'd always, we missed a few, right? There was this red line. I'm like, what red line? And sure enough, there's a red line that, you know, shows them how far they can go up to the door, so. It's good. We didn't have to repaint the United States. That was, that was good. Because when I told, I know I've told them, I told the contractors, I want you to seal, but do you want us to repaint the United States? Like, no, I don't think so. I don't think we can afford that. Anyway, same, same thing at the IC. That playground gets used a lot. It was pretty beat up. We had some repairs, new stripes for the, the kids could shoot their three pointers and stuff like that. One of the unintended side effects of this is that I'll have to use less salt to keep it ice-free this winter. That black really melts, you know, and that's the first thing. The staff at those buildings want their playgrounds salted because the kids will run around out there and fall. So we put an inordinate amount of salt on those things, so this will help. Also, I was telling the BGT committee, one of the first things when I got hired to do this job eight years ago is discussing, we got to get rid of all the retaining walls, and there was a set of stairs there, and retaining walls on the front, they, in 19, or 2000 when they built this school, the, whatever they made the retaining walls out were the same thing they made sugar cubes out of. They just deteriorated. It's all just dissolved. So finally, this is, this is the last set of retaining walls that we were able to take out of there. We've had to do some contouring to get water to flow in the right direction and things like that, so. This is just, it's safer for the kids, more, you know, it's easier for me to maintain. At the IC, if you've ever been to lunch at the IC, it's pretty lively in there. Staff requested some more sound panels in there, so the gray rectangles that you see up in the ceiling there were added this summer. There were some green ones, multicolored ones around the wall that, I think they were overpowering, so we put these in. I haven't, you know, we haven't had enough to trial run on to see if it was successful, and I do know that I could buy more if I had to, you know. Also in this picture, it shows the lighting. We did a lot of lighting upgrades at the IC this year. The cafeteria, the gymnasium, the library, all got LED. They're on a lot, and that'll be a good cost savings. Especially at the gyms, it's a maintenance savings for me because I don't have to go up and replace bulbs and boughs and things at the end of a 30-foot lift, so. And it's, it's cost-effective. It really is really reasonable to have this done. Go continue. There's other places throughout the district that we would like to add. This is the middle school gym. Paul Christensen requested a facelift and paint, so it's very subtle. It was more tan and brown before. Now it's more, same kind of colors that we use at night school, the grays and things like that. And so a nice, a nice, you know, bringing it into this century kind of thing. Oxygen at the high school. Again, we had high bay, multi-tube fluorescent lights in there. We replaced them with these LED. They call it UFO style for obvious reasons. Much more efficient, much brighter, much cleaner, you know, and again, for me, I don't have to go up and replace them very often. This is, if you go into the main gym at the high school, the old apparatus that held the baskets and things like that were original to the building in 1962. They would fold up, maybe not unfold at times. I've been called a number of times to try to yank a couple of them down. Anyway, through a partnership with the basketball club, we were able to buy all-new overhead equipment in the high school. And talking, and coaching, and talking with Coach Nessai, the kids really like him. They play, they play nice, you know, I don't, I don't quite understand that, but they, Mount Hore was always known as a, as a very forgiving gym for shooters. I don't know what that means, but he says these play just as good as the old ones, so. He's happy, I'm happy. District office upgrade. Yeah, we did a lot of facelifting at the district office, new windows, new lights, new flooring, painted it throughout, moved some, moved some staff around, moved some offices around, things like that. Yeah, you really just kind of gave it a nice facelift on the inside. And in talking with staff there, they're pretty happy with the results, and that makes me happy. Clean it up. Stumps, holy cow. We lost a lot of trees over the last few years. All the ash trees are gone, of course. These were the last of the ash trees that were in the Garfield Street stretch. And, you know, you got to get the stumps gone, right? So we took the opportunity this summer, I think we took out like 27 stumps around the district. A local guy rents a machine and comes and does it for us. It's too easy not to. So, yeah, and it cleans it up, makes it look nice and that. That'll all, that'll all fill up with grass real quick. Football shed. Years ago when I was coaching, there was not much of a shed down in the lower practice field, and then when I was teaching, I'd say, hey, why don't we build this metal shed? And Bart will remember that. We built that, we built that metal shed that's still down there, and that's been a long time, 15 years ago, 12 years ago, something like that. Anyway, it was always my dream to have a real, in-the-ground cement, you know, facility for both FIED and football to use, so that's exactly what they got. And it was supposed to, it was originally designed to be a tech ed project. The construction class was going to help me build it, and that just didn't work out. Timing wasn't right and things like that. But anyway, we were able to get this thing done this summer. The doors are on it now. Football's moved into the right-hand side of it. FIED, Todd assured me he'd be moving his stuff in later this week, and then we'll get those old suitable-for-burning sheds that are there gone, and any vermin that may be living in them. So anyway, this is, I think it's got, it's got electrical power down there, lights on the inside. It does have a dusted dawn light on the outside. One of the things that I'm working with Will Rogan and our IT coordinator is to get some sort of surveillance in that area. Yeah, we're working on that. It'd be, it'd be nice to have some eyes on that and have the community know there's eyes on it. Yeah. And I don't know if there's any more. That's it? That's it. You know, and, and there's a lot of other things, you know, we, I mean, I've got, I've got a list of probably 35, almost 40 things that were on the capital improvement plan, and all but the sidewalk between here and the bus, the middle school bus, were all done. So we got, we knocked a bunch of them out. And now it's time to start figuring out what's next to do, right? Playgrounds, it never stops you. There's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of places that we can spend our money, and I'll be working with administration at the building to get their needs, and then find out how to prioritize those and get those into the budget. We'll talk again in the spring with my, with my next year's plan. Any questions for me?
I don't have any questions for that.
Dave, you're a machine. The things that you do and how you do them, and how you engage other people in solving questions that arise throughout projects, and you allow that to happen throughout your entire team. Thank you so much for all you do.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Six C, local school board consortium. So I received an email from a board member in Bearaboo, and I guess there's a group of school board members who have been meeting very informally in the past few years. It's about 11 or 12 districts, meet once a month, talk about for an hour, whatever is on people's minds, whatever would be helpful. They had their first meeting last Thursday, and I joined it. There was Sauk, Wisconsin Heights, Bearaboo. There's about seven different people there. They were all super nice and friendly. I think although there isn't like a well-established purpose, I think if there is any way that the boards could unify when it comes to school funding or larger topics that everyone has a common interest in, like, it might be, you know, beneficial to pull together resources or thoughts, or, you know, how did you communicate to your community about this, or how do you engage teachers about this thing, you know? It just, like I said, it was very informal. I went, I'd be happy to keep going. I just kind of wanted to see what anybody else thought about it, if anyone else wants to join, if anyone has any thoughts. Otherwise, I just thought it was a good chance to meet others and network.
I had a chance yesterday, bumped into someone else in Spring Green, who I introduced with as a school board member for River Valley, and, you know, it's a 20-minute conversation right away about different things you're facing, so I can see the value in that.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Yeah. Yep, so I'll let you all know when the next one is. I'll just plan to keep going unless somebody wants to jump in.
Do they have some kind of set schedule or anything?
Um, it's once a month, and we did pick the next one, but it was like whoever was there was like, oh, I have a committee meeting that night, can we do it this night? It's not, there was an attempt to be like every third Wednesday, but that didn't quite work out. So I think it's like one month at a time. Six D, communication to the community. Last year at some point in time, I don't remember exactly what month, but Dr. Slano shared with us that the Mount Hore Mail had presented an opportunity for us to have a guest column each month, and at the time, Dr. Slano shared with us, you know, there were some openings that maybe the school board would like to write something. So knowing that if we are going to write something together, it may take a while. We may want to pick a topic. I brought it up with Dr. Slano, the months of January and March are open. I don't know if we want to just kind of pick a month, if we want to start to brainstorm some topics. I had two right off the bat, and I haven't raised these with Dr. Slano yet, so they may not be good ideas, but, but, you know, one, you know, we can, anything that we can do related to retention and, you know, accolades to our staff. It's not, you know, staff's, it's May, I think is usually staff appreciation month. But, you know, if we wanted to do January as a new year and, you know, accolades to our staff that worked really hard, that kind of thing. My other thought was also, I think it's when we are probably going to start doing, you know, the Cali meetings again about whether, how we're going to address some possible building needs, even if we wrote something just kind of educating about the process, not necessarily that we are going to do this or are, but how, here's ways you could get involved or share your thoughts.
I, I agree. I'd do that closer to when that's going to happen.
Yeah. I, I just meant, no, I didn't mean like about voting for it. I just meant like, oh, they're going to meet on these days, or, you know, here's how you could share information.
Even so.
Yeah, yeah. And then my other, other thought was, you know, I went back to our recent strategic planning survey, and I was like, what's most important? Retracting and attaining staff, life after high school, mental health. So I was like, any of those things, I mean, many of those things are already covered by these topics that are here. So anyways, I bring it up. We can either decide today, we can continue to brainstorm if there's a person or two that want to kind of lead the way and then share back. I don't know how, but I just know that it takes us sometimes because we can only do things in open meetings and that kind of thing. It might take us a while. Yeah. The thought I had today, looking at this, is whether there's the role in the community legislative committee to kind of take a lead on that and look at, look at topics. I think those are all great topics. I think the other, I think the other things that came to my mind were like, are there any budget or legislative updates that we want to make sure we share with the community? Are there other referendum topics we want to share with the community? Those, those were two of the other ideas that I had, but these are going to be. It makes sense to me that this would be something that the Cali committee does, but I don't know about others. We could start something there and break it. Any other thoughts? Or should we let that committee discuss it?
And it doesn't have to be, Jam. You're in March. We're happy to adjust. So if we wanted to do something that was also in recognition of our staff, I know they would love that. We could always make student services, mental health awareness come in March, and then, you know, happy to be flexible, I guess is the best way to say it.
Yeah, I, I mean, obviously we want to always recognize our staff, but also knowing that recruiting and retaining staff and that we can kind of spin the two together, it seems like it would be addressing multiple interests.
I think highlighting staff in March is a great idea. Good timing.
Would you mind if we still transferred it to the Cali committee and then you all could start? Is that fine? Okay. Does that sound good to everybody else? Any other thoughts?
Makes sense.
All righty, moving on to this number seven, our action items. We have three first readings, and Leah not here, we'll just present each, discuss each, but we won't be able to vote on them this evening. Seven A is first reading. 7A is first reading of our policy 182. This is one of the policies that several people worked on when discussing a set of policies that are specific to the school board. Rod, Jim, Carly, Leah, thank you all for joining. We got up very early. I mean, we're always getting early, but it's one thing to be up and on-screen early. There was only two real changes and both changes reflect what we already do. So, it's just being more specific and putting it out in the policy. So, I don't know if anyone else who was on that committee wants to share or add anything. Otherwise, we'll just move it to our next meeting, which is on the 18th.
I have just one comment since we have a chance to just discuss. Chip, I remember when this came up. I had a, I had a reaction right away to the board's major role is policymaking. I feel like that's a tool of what we do, but that is not our central role. And I was just curious about, this, this seems to be, you know, mostly about our responsibilities and our opportunities to interact with the schools. And so, it just seemed a little off to me where, where if the point is to talk about the liaison and the interactions. In a matter of time, I take it, so the two things I would say is, I'm not, I'm not super comfortable with that statement, but I also don't see where it directly ties in or if there's maybe a better way for us to tie that in.
I interpreted it as, as a lead-in to say, here's why the visits are important because the things that you learn influence in these areas, influence the policy reviews that come out. So, I wonder if there's, to your point, a better way to rearrange that to me.
Yeah, I mean, like, I was, I was going back to the WASP handbook back when we first did this and it was like, you know, the school board is responsible for establishing goals, setting policy and overseeing resources for the school district, which I think all fits in well with that, with the lead-in. It just seemed a little limiting to say policy.
Just change the thought enough. The board's major role is policymaking and I think that changes the tone of the whole thing.
Yeah.
It's a broader, more inclusive definition.
Did you want me to weave in that seriation then or?
Throw that out to anyone else.
Goal-setting and budgeting?
We could just do the, a couple of words difference as well. It's fine with me.
Comments or thoughts about this?
I just had a question. It says village liaisons. Is that left intentionally vague because there's like positions that open up like Adams, who recently worked on, just came up now? I was going to figure the list more, but that was just, it seems like a bigger difference. So, I just wanted to check that out now.
All righty, moving on then to 7B. Brian, first reading of policy 461, higher certification academic excellence scholarship.
Yeah, so this one just has a few grammatical errors that we fixed in it. The key fixes to this policy were really the changing of the date because now the state, instead of it being February 21st, it's February 25th, or, sorry, February 15th to February 25th. That's what was changed. So, that was kind of our biggest piece. The other piece to it is down below, right, right above it, and Adam caught this, is that it's a recipient gets this scholarship and then there's alternatives. There's more than one alternate for that, so that there's multiple. That way, if somebody decides to attend a school, a college out of state, they obviously wouldn't get this scholarship. And so, sometimes you have to go, you know, three or four deep before you get to it. And then, at the bottom, we added two additional qualifications that the WASP asked us to include, which is that in the event that you get both the academic excellence scholarship and the technical excellence scholarship, you can only choose one. And then, because we have a lot of local scholarships that have really specific rules, wanted to make sure that this, and this one and the other one that you'll see tonight, this is specifically not a local scholarship. This is driven by state statutes.
Any questions for Brian? And that, just to clarify, the state statute is what governs the language about citizenship?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, it's all over there.
But the, the tiebreaker is a, that's a local process? Because it says that's developed by, where was it at? The high school faculty determines?
Each other, I think. Okay. Yes.
Right, number four, it seems to me that it's, it's bummed up pretty good there. But I just want to make sure there's no room for discretion on what college you can and cannot go to in the state. It seems like it's, includes everything, but I just want to make sure that we don't get into something crazy there.
I, I think it's clear to me, but if, if anybody else has any suggestions. I know a lot of it is specific on state statutes, so.
Okay.
The school counselors reviewed it and they, they don't have any issues with it, but, yeah. So, just wanted to get some of those dates and things to learn to.
Anybody else? Thank you, Brian. Want to revisit it further?
And then the other one is the, the pair to that, which is the technical excellence scholarship. And that was really, again, the 15th was changed to the 25th. Kind of specifically wrote out some of it and Adam had a lot of suggestions, which I appreciated, just making it more active instead of a passive. So, participated to participation in a, so it just really kind of changed, I mean, just kind of the tone of it. And then, again, the last piece is that it is a local scholarship and it's driven by state statutes as well.
Any questions or comments?
The only thing I noticed is that the second tiebreaker on this is an ACT score as opposed to anything related to GPA. Would it make sense for a second to be, so we have GPA in CTE courses, but then the second should be overall GPA as opposed to an ACT score?
Can you go down a little bit?
So, E.
I can look into that to see if that's something we did or.
Okay, I'll look at state because I'm curious, that seems to reward a, a good test taker as opposed to a qualified student.
Sounds great. I'll look into that piece and I'll bring it back to the.
Adam can't qualify.
I'll look into that piece and I'll bring it back to the next. Thank you. Yep. Thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Number eight, citizen counts.
We're so grateful to have you in the audience tonight.
Well, thank you.
How are you doing?
I'm good.
Great to see you. Good luck. Number nine, future added items. If you have anything you'd like to suggest, please let me, myself, or Dr. Stilner know. Number 10, schedule of next meetings. Anything to highlight?
No, thank you for referencing the Finance Committee meeting. As a further reminder, it's a 2:00 PM virtual call next Tuesday.
Number one, adjournment, like to move motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion by Rod and second by Carly.